Ready to begin, thank you.
Thanks Brenda. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to, good morning. I'd like to call the Operations Committee meeting of the Bi-State Development Agency to order on Friday, March 18th, 2022 at 8:30 a.m. Myra, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Win Miller?
Present.
Commissioner Galladay?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Beach?
Here.
Commissioner Cox? Commissioner Simmons?
Present.
Commissioner Postello?
Present.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Gladney?
Present.
Commissioner Moore?
Present.
Thank you. Myra, were there any public comments submitted?
No Chair, none more submitted.
Thank you, then we can move on to the approval of the minutes of the January 28th, 2022 Operations Committee Open Meeting. These were provided in your, in your packet for your review. I would need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is On The Way with ADA, the Fixed Route Incentive Program. And I would ask Chuck Stewart for comments, please.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Trying to get my screen together here. This morning, I am going to present the, to the Operations Committee for referral to the Board, request to permanently implement the On The Way to ADA Program. This program started in June of '21, and what it does, it's a lot, it allows our ADA eligible passing, customers to ride on our MetroLink and bus system, our fixed route system. The program has been very successful over this period of time. We have had 627 people that have participated in this program. Program was right on time for us in terms of providing some relief for our call to ride system, which you know has been overtaxed with the lack of, of operators and the demands that we have seen during this period of time. So, basically, I would like to recommend that the Operations Committee approve this for referral to the Board of Directors at the next meeting. I'd be happy to entertain any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Stewart? It's a great program. I really hope that we're able to implement it fully, especially on this, in this time of limited service. So, thank you to the staff for doing all the work that you have, and I, I look forward to being able to present this to the Board. Is there a motion to approve?
More moves.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And any abstentions? Thank you. The next item is the Contract Modification of the Union Station Tunnel Rehabilitation Consultant Services. And I think Chris Paylor is going to explain this to us.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. This paper seeks approval to modify the contract with the designer for the Union Station Tunnel to include construction phase services. We entered into a contract with Majestarian Masters to design the rehabilitation of the Union Station Tunnel several years ago. There's been a lot of twists and turns on the project, trying to figure out the best way to construct it, as well as working with, negotiating with the property owners above, and figure out again the best way to minimize the impacts on them. We're nearing the end of completion, the end of design now, heading into the major construction phase. We'll be going out with the major package in a couple of months. This modification seeks to increase the value of the contract with the designer to allow us to utilize their staff to help augment our staff during the construction phase. It was originally my hope that we'd be able to use exclusively, or at least mostly, Bi-State staff to manage, expect the construction. We just are going to have a number of projects ongoing at the same time over the next few years. This probably something about three years, and this will allow us some flexibility to call on these consultants to help, again, supplement our staff. It's a lot of evening work. It's difficult to staff in general, but with all these other projects, we're going to have ongoing at the same time. Again, this will allow us some more flexibility. So this just increases the, the cap for the contract. We don't have, this isn't a, like a lump sum bid. This just allows us the flexibility to call people in up to this amount. And again, hopefully, we won't have to use very much of this, but we need to have it there in case we need it. As I mentioned, it's a little bit difficult now with so much evening work. So, you have any questions?
Are there questions for Chris? I just have one. So Chris, we, we approved a not to exceed amount of four and a half million. Is the 1.6 million in addition to that?
That's correct. We didn't include any costs for the construction phase originally. I didn't know how it's going to be built or how long it's going to take. So it would just been guesswork at the time. And again, we were hoping not to have to use them very much for construction phase. But again, with all these other ongoing construction projects, we need to have that flexibility.
And where are the funds coming from?
We have a number of grants. Probably six or seven different federal grants.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
My question would be, is if the grants don't come through, where would that money come from?
Well, the grants are already been approved. The bids come in. If we need more money, then we can, it'll, it'll always be the federal grants. We'll just have to move money from other projects around.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Thank you Sam. Please note that Commissioner Gladney has abstained. The next item on the, on the agenda is the Single Bid Contract Award for the Downtown Tunnel Repairs. And I think this is Chris Paylor and Tom Curran, please.
Yes, thank you. This project is repairs to our downtown tunnel. A lot of this work will be concurrent with the Union Station project. So, we're trying to get mostly evenings to Union Station and during the week. And in this project, to use evenings during the weekend. We cannot run a single track in both locations at the same time. So it makes it very challenging for the construction. We went out for bids for this work on, in January. We had a few contractors were interested. On bid day, we only received a single bid. In general, contractors are very busy, and as I mentioned, this is challenging work in the tunnel downtown at weird hours, very restrictive hours. The bid came in significantly over our independent estimate. Based on our procurement regulations, since we only received a single bid, we converted it to a request for proposals, and that allows us to sit down and negotiate with the contractor, find out if there's, were ways that we could bring down the bid, which we did. We looked at the individual line items on the contract, and most of them were right in line with our independent estimate, with the exception of two items. One was the general workforce based on most of the work being in the evening, just being inefficient, where they still have to pay the workers for 40 hours, even though they're only working the weekend nights. Again, which is a significant cost. And then the others were, the other main item was the standpipe, and that was significantly over our estimate. And that's the pipe that's basically used for fire incidents in the tunnel. It's just an empty pipe. And then when the, if there's a fire incident in the tunnel, the fire department come down to hook into that and fill that up with water, and that will allow efficient efforts in the tunnel to fight fires. So the standpipe needs to be replaced. And again, their bid that they got from the sub was significantly over ours. So, we worked with them to reduce the restrictions a little bit, as much as we could on the weekend hours. And then bigger issue was standpipe, and worked very closely with them. Were able to get them to come down about a minute and a half dollars on their bid. So I think our estimate was low on the workforce, just based on, again, the restrictions for night work. And so based on that and the ability, the way that we were able to get their bid down, we believe this bid is in, in line and reasonable, and we recommend approval. Are there any questions?
Are there questions for, for Chris? So, so Chris, this is, did we, did we really do that poorly on the original independent estimate? Because this is, even with the million and, million three reduction, it's, it's, it's a huge difference between our bid and, is it just that we didn't think we were going to have to do as much night work? Or is it that because of the labor costs? I mean, I know you explained some of this, but this is, it's a big discrepancy.
Yes, but, so the, the original estimate was 2.9, and this came in about 3.9. So, yeah, it's about a third more. You know, the biggest, the biggest issue again is the demand power. When we look at estimates, it's hard to, it's hard to estimate inefficiency. How much time it takes a contractor to go into the tunnel and get out of the tunnel, it's tight work. And again, paying the, how much time they're going to have to pay their workers for the limited amount of work that they do. So, if, if they're only, if a worker is only able to work 20 hours a week, we're hoping that there are other ways they're going to be able to pay those workers for other things. But they're saying, the discussions with the contractor, that may not be the case, such that they might pay them for the full 40 hours if they're not able to find work for them in other parts of the project, or the projects. So that was a big part of the discussion as to why it was in the bid. And I think that's part of the reason that the other contractors went away. So, really, it's an understanding, and again, just the restricted workspace and work hours is difficult to estimate. Once we sat down with them, we felt comfortable that everything they were telling us was, was reasonable. So, it will give us good experience going forward on these type of projects to better understand. And I think that's the reason the other two bidders didn't bid also, or just because it was, seemed so inefficient. And again, it's, it's challenging work. It's tough to, it's tough to estimate risks sometimes.
Thank you for that additional explanation. I feel a little bit better. And I see now that the 4.377 is really, it includes the 10% contingency. So, are there any other questions? If not, I need a motion to approve, please.
I still move.
Thank you. And a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any abstention, any opposition? Any extensions?
Abstain.
Thank you. Next item is the North Side/South Side Memorandum of Agreement. And I think this is, we're going to turn to CEO Talby Roach for this. Exciting.
Very good. Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Yes, so actually, it is exciting because what is key about this MOA is really for the first time in a long time with the North Side/South Side project, what we have is a unification of interest between the city and county. Inevitably, this is going to be a line that goes not only through the city, but then connecting into the county. And the key part here is having a unified engineering group. In this case, it will be AECOM, so that the two independent studies having to do with the jurisdictions are then unified in a kind of continuous study. And look, that's how these projects work. We need to build a project, a transit project that works, moving across these jurisdictions. And this is very exciting that the county and the city are working together. They've had multiple meetings. I will say, all three electeds are endorsing this unification of, of concepts, including Chairman Kern, although he, he was very respectful in deferring to his partners on the Missouri side. We do have a unification of that this is the next step for project expansion. So this would be the second phase of North Side/South Side, so that phase going into the county. I like to call it the county connector. We've had some very, very good positive developments as far as moving Phase 1 forward in presentations to Washington DC, incidentally, that the mayor has been moving forward. So, the momentum is building. No matter what, in projects like this, what it really needs is political will. And moving forward with political will means unifications of interest, unifications of interest as far as having the same consultant team working on these alignments and being sure that we all agree, hey, this is the right way to go. So I'm very excited that this MOU, which allows me, us to work in partnership with the county in working on the alignment of North Side/South Side as it moves into North County, helps us work together and, and essentially fulfill the needs of, of the citizens in that area. So, I really would very much appreciate approval of this, of moving forward on this MOU, so we can then move to scope and get moving on this project.
Thanks Talby. Are there questions? I just have one quick one, which is how long do you think the alternative analysis phase will last?
So we will sit down and, and negotiate on that basis. But I, so I am hopeful that we will look at that within a 10-month period of time. I will tell you, the engineers would like it a little longer than that, Chair. But I'm trying to fit a, essentially, an opportunity window of funding. And so, look, it's my job to try to push along as much as I can and, and unifying these ideas. In other words, that we don't have other alternatives, alternative routes. We're pretty unified on the direction that we're going. The county needs to weigh in, the county staff, about what, what specific routes they would like. The city is a little bit more determined with that, but all of it works together. So I think about 10 months is, is, would be the operative timeframe and goal that I'd like to achieve.
Thank you.
And bidding after that? And start of construction?
Well, that's,
Depending on some reports, I understand.
Yep. So, assuming then we got, we get, let's say, a full funding grant agreement, you could put that out on the street for a bidding cycle that would take really about 90 days, and then thereafter, get it out on the street. I would say probably 18 to 24 months thereafter, given where this alignment is. We're not talking about any complicated tunnels or bridges associated with the alignment, which, which adds to the complexity. So it, it could be a timeframe in there. That's a very speculative. But given what the alignment is proposed to be, it is a relatively simple construction.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the MOA.
Move that we approve the MOA.
Thank you. For a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Um, next item is the Contract Renewal Negotiations, Negotiations with the St. Clair County Transit District. And I believe the, Talby, you have some comments for us?
Yep, thank you Chair. So this is just informational. Obviously, St. Clair County is an absolutely vital partner to moving forward with transit, especially in Illinois. And it, it is time for us to renew that contract. The contract is in need of updating and anticipating what are the desires of St. Clair County and the Transit District in particular with how they want that contract to, what they want in it, how they want it to read, what are the reporting requirements from Bi-State. And I know that there's some desire to change some of those, and of course, we're amenable to that. They're a great client, very, very strong supporter of transit. And, you know, it's just time to renegotiate that contract and be sure that we're all on the same page, so to speak. I will be assigning Chuck Stewart and Tammy Fulbright to quarterback that from our side. That Tammy has obviously vast knowledge on the financial side, and Chuck has, and who has done a great job of providing new leadership over at Metro Transit. So I'm very much looking forward to it. I just wanted to be sure that the Board was aware of it and that we are moving forward with all speed. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, particularly from the St. Clair folks? And I hope it goes well. It was informational only, so the next item. Talby, is there any unscheduled business?
No Chair.
Then I would ask for an operations report from Chuck Stewart.
Good morning again, everybody. Thank you Chair Win Miller. So I think you have an operations port, reporting your packet, but I'd like to highlight a few items for you. Our sign-on and retention bonuses are working. We are, our ability to attract new employees is improving slowly, but we are moving in the right direction. We've had 146 new hires since the sign-on program began. We're paying them in installments as they make progress in their first year. We've paid 22 sign-on bonuses to date, the first installment. Second installment for those people will begin in March. The second installment of our retention bonus is also scheduled for March, March 25th. That was the bonus paid to our existing employees. And as a result of that, we have lost a few, but we've probably kept a lot more under the circumstances. From the standpoint of shortages in terms of staffing levels, we're down 122 bus operators. This is as of, as of March 10th. We're down seven MetroLink operators, 52 Colorado ride operators, nine mechanics, general mechanics, 34 vehicle mechanics, MetroLink electromechanics, we're down 10, and electricians, we're down 11. But we are working. We continue to have recruiting events. The good news is that we have employees in the, in the pipeline. We've received 130 applications for Metro, for bus operators, 20 candidates in process, 24 started training in March, and there are 24, well, not 24. The, from a call to ride standpoint, we have 85 new applications. This is the month of February. I'm talking about 25 candidates in process and three scheduled for training. To move on with our performance summary, from a general summary standpoint, we are planning our service change on March 22nd. This will adjust some of our Missouri MetroLink route frequencies, reduction of service of about 25, about 5%, I'm sorry. Call Ride is working to accelerating, to accelerate hiring drivers. Although our ADA trip miles remain high, over 7,000, 7,000 in January as compared to 26,000 scheduled and completed for the month. There's a, a graph, I guess, on page 27 at the bottom, mechanic compares our fixed route ridership between 19, 20, 21, and 22. And as you can see, our 21 and 22 numbers are way below 19 and 20. But our 22 numbers are showing an increase over 21, with the exception of, section of January, where we had a little decline in ridership compared to 2021. But we are hoping with gasoline prices and those kind of things that our ridership will improve. And we are, as we attempt to right-size our service as we move forward with the future of Metro Transit. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there questions on the ridership or the operations report?
We've got a quick one, I guess. Chuck, thanks for that, and thanks for all the work that everyone's done on, with, with the incentive and the bonus program. It looks like it's working. I know it's tough to answer this with any amount of detail, because a lot of data goes into it. But with it looking like our employment situation, you know, might be turning around, we're hiring more operators. Can, can you forecast or give any sense on a timeline of when, you know, we might be able to reverse some of these, some of these service cuts to, once we get, you know, operator levels back where they should be? Is that on the horizon? What do you, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, I, I, I think we should, should take our time in calculating that. I think what we've done is reduced our service level to the point where we can meet the demand. And as we retool as it relates to, to, to operators and that kind of thing. So, I mean, we have the ability to, to stick in a few extra routes every now and then as needed. But I think we need to take our time and really figure out what this is going to look like in the future, not be overreactive. And we need to give our, I've been meeting with my Metro teams, all of our leadership team. We need to give our employees a break. We need to give them a time, a little time to breathe and recover. As you know, people worked above and beyond the call of duty during this period of time. So there are a couple of different reasons for this service reduction. But most of all, it's to, to give our system time to recover and regroup and formulate a, a strategy for how we move forward. So I can't really give you a time period for that, but I wouldn't want to jump out there too quick. And that to result in us having these same, same issues. We are focused on being there when we say we're going to be there versus, I mean, the worst thing we can do is not show up. So we want to make sure that we get past those problems.
Thank you. I, I figured the answer was something along those lines. Just wanted to get the, the idea in the, in the pipeline and get us thinking. But thank you for your work and for your answer.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? I, I just have one. Chuck, do you think, um, if gas prices remain where they are for a while, how, how long does it take? If you, if you know this answer, can, can ballpark it before people's behavior changes? And they actually, we start to attract new writers who maybe have not been in the system?
So what I'm told by the team is that the magic number is four bucks a gallon, okay? Which we're there already. But however, that would be under normal circumstances when people are, are getting out every day and going to work. And that's just not happening right now. For example, people coming downtown, that's really, hasn't changed. So the, the gasoline price increases are not having the same impact that they would normally have. So I'm not, I'm not sure when that will, what, what, we won't see that until, till basically people start going to work again. So as long as they're still at home, gasoline prices are not really impacting us.
Great, thank you. Thanks for that report. Any other questions? And then we can move on to the President's Report.
Good morning again. So, so I, please, everybody, remember that this Good morning again. So, so I, please, everybody, remember that this week is actually Driver Appreciation Week. So I've gone out to the facilities mostly in the very early morning just to show up and say hello to our operators when they are coming to work their shifts, just as simple as thank you for your work today. And so we're trying to accomplish that. Most of our team has, has been there, as simple as holding up thank you signs, having lunch available or breakfast, depending on which shift, and just thanking our operators for all that work. I, and in that occasion, I have had the opportunity to talk to many of our long, long time employees, and for instance, to reflect on what Chuck mentioned earlier in his comments. Yes, there's no question, we've had a lot of folks who've been working six and seven day shifts to try to cover these and still move St. Louis. So this kind of right sizing our, our service expectation, these are all interrelated issues. It also is about supporting our employees. Has to be done. They are still moving St. Louis and, and, and doing good work both in Missouri and Illinois, and they need to be supported, and we, we hope to do that. If you happen to see any of them this week, please deliver your appreciation. Also, I'm very excited about where we are on FY23. Tammy will give that presentation later in, in the next committee meeting, but I, the staff should be commended at trying to be sure that this budget is, is not only just flat, but sometimes occasionally dipping down, as we need to live, live within the final, financial resources that are available to us. When we look at where our sales tax growth is, or where sales tax, if it's flat, then that's the service that we need to offer. It's a very simple principle, but one that we need to adhere to rigorously. I'm very proud to say that we've been able to do that for now. This is the fourth fiscal year that, that I've been leading, and I'm very proud of the team being able to be responsive to that. So please thank them once you see their presentation. Also, Northside, Southside, I hinted at this a little bit with the MOU, but I did prepare a presentation for the mayor to try to get moving on the political wheel aspect of this very important expansion of light rail service. And there's been some really very positive discussions about having the financial funding from our partners in Washington DC with, with really good alignments that reach both into north, north city and, and north, south city. But then moving on to an alignment out in the county that makes sense, that's viable, that connects to the new investments that we're having, including the soccer stadium. So very excited about the movement on Northside, Southside. We haven't had momentum on that kind of project for some time. Also, I, I do want to note that we will move into with FY23 that I will be presenting on a one-on-one basis, of course, to County Council, to St. Clair County, to, of course, our city partners, and happy to do so. Tammy Fulbright will also be doing that on a more detailed financial basis. And of course, part of this is getting down to the details of these very important budget decisions, and this, this, excuse me, sets the course of the agency over several years. So that concludes my report this morning. I await any questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Toby. Are there questions for Toby? Seeing none, I would, I would ask Myra for the future board, upcoming board and committee meeting dates.
Yes, Chair. The next Board of Commissioners meeting is scheduled for Friday, April 22nd. The next Safety and Security meeting is scheduled for Thursday, May 5th, and the next Operations, Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee meetings are scheduled for Friday, June 10th, all beginning at 8:30.
Thank you. There, there's only one item for consideration in the executive session agenda, and that's approval of the minutes of the executive session on January 28th of the Operations Committee. So if there are no corrections to those minutes which have been provided to you, and if there's no discussion concerning the minutes, the committee can proceed to a vote without going into executive session.
So moved.
Great. So I need, I need a, a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. And a roll call vote on the minutes, please.
Commissioner Beach.
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney.
Yes.
Commissioner Galladay.
Yes.
Commissioner Windmiller.
Aye.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Pastello.
Aye.
The motion passed.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, I, I just have one announcement. I want to announce that Commissioner Beach has accepted the position as Chair of the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee, and as such, he'll be chairing the next meeting, the, the AFA meeting that we have immediately following this one. I want to thank him so much for his service and for stepping in. So we will, I'm passing the baton to you, Terry, and you'll be able to chair the next meeting in just a few minutes.
Thank you.
And if there's no further discussion, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you. All those, no, we don't, we don't need a roll call vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Great. Any opposed? We're adjourned.
We're ready to begin, Commissioner Beach.
Okay, thank you. I'll call the meeting of the Audit, Finance, Administration Committee meeting to order. First order of business is roll call. Myra?
Commissioner Beach.
Present.
Commissioner Pastello.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Gladney. Commissioner Windmiller.
Present.
Commissioner Galladay.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Brown.
Yep.
We check with Fred again.
Commissioner Pastello.
Must have just stopped the wait. Under public comment, Myra, were there any comment cards submitted for today's meeting?
No, Chair, none more submitted.
Okay, we'll move to item four, the approval of the last open meeting session committee minutes from January 28th. I will need a motion if there are any comments or questions this time. If not, a motion is in order to approve.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any upstairs, anyone abstaining? Next order of business is contract authorization, third-party Oracle support, item five. Tom Curran is here to, to provide comments and discussion. Tom?
Good morning, Commissioners. Bi-State is seeking to negotiate and enter into a contract with a third-party vendor for the provision of Oracle support services. Bi-State's office business is similar as part of the Oracle eBusiness suite, and we also have many Oracle databases and use by other applications. And Bi-State has used the Oracle Corporation for maintenance and support of our Oracle environment for many years, but the price of the service and the weak level of support that we've been receiving have prompted us to look at other options. We currently pay $525,000 annually for Oracle support services, and we do not believe that we are receiving responsive support. Beginning in 2005, other firms began working to provide Oracle support outside of the Oracle Corporation itself, and an Oracle third-party support model is now well-established. With the approval of our key business leaders following months of analysis, Bi-State has issued a request for proposals for third-party Oracle support services. At least two vendors are available to provide the quality support we expect, and other firms, and those firms are currently developing their proposals. So this RFP is a competitive bid model as opposed to the sole source arrangement we currently have with Oracle, and we expect the cost to be about $325,000 per year or less, which would save us $200,000 annually. The total contract spend over a five-year period would be $1,625,000 or less. Now, the process of converting to the third-party support would take time. Once we contract with a partner, Bi-State would need to notify Oracle and identify all of our legally entitled Oracle patches and software versions, and then transfer them to our environment, and that would take about six to eight weeks. The largest portion of our 2022 Oracle support renewal is due August 1st. If our RFP is successful and find a suitable partner, we'd like to be ready by that time for 30, third-party support starting July 1st. We expect the RFP to be complete by the end of the month, and a new contract in place by mid-April, and that would allow us to take the necessary steps in May and June to do the conversion, and we would avoid the August payment. If we don't receive a suitable proposal that would meet these parameters, then we will remain with our Oracle support arrangement for this year. Funding for technical support is provided through our annual operating budget, and we're requesting that the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee approve, forward to the Board of Commissioners, a request to pursue a competitively bid contract for Oracle support services that does not exceed $325,000 per year for five years. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments for Tom? I might add that Oracle is going through a lot of growth and growing pains that come with that. Last fall, I was in Nashville for an announcement with the gov, where the governor, the past governor and the president of the University of Tennessee system announced that Oracle was coming to the East Nashville neighborhood on the riverfront, bringing 8,500 jobs. We're spending $250 million to buy 60 acres, and they're going to spend $1.2 billion on new campus, and the state of Tennessee's going to build a new interstate exit for them. So they're growing, and with that growth comes growing pains. So I think this is a, a great effort. Any other questions or comments? If not, a motion would be in order, I believe.
Just, just a quick question. Tom, there are significant number of providers in this space.
So we had a, a interested from four parties originally. So we had an information session with those four firms. Rimini Street and Spinnaker are the leaders, and they're the firms that are best suited to provide the services. So we expect at least those two to be submitting for proposals.
That's helpful, thank you. And thanks for keeping an eye on this.
Just a, a curious question. Other transit service providers, are they Oracle clients? Do you, do you know what that climate is like for them, and if they're experiencing what we're experiencing? I've been reading a lot about Oracle not being able to measure up, but clearly Chairman Beach's response makes some sense as to why they are having some struggles now, some growing pains.
Yes, we've had difficulties for a long time with getting basically things escalated to receive a response in a timely manner. And sometimes it takes so long that we actually come up with solutions ourselves. So there's been a lot of dissatisfaction with Oracle in terms of this type of support, and they, we pay a lot of money, and it's common knowledge that a lot of that money is used by Oracle to pursue other interests, and it's not the real cost of the support. We did have a meeting with Jacksonville Transit to see what their experience was like moving from Oracle, providing their own support, to a third-party, and it was very positive. I think that that Zoom meeting kind of put us over the top to think that this would be something that would be good for Bi-State as well.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I just have one more question. Have you sat down, I'm assuming you've sat down repeatedly with Oracle to tell them of your, of the agency's dissatisfaction?
They know that we are unhappy with the response time, but honestly, it's such a big corporation, and that's kind of a widely held opinion that I don't expect that they're going to change. We are not a big player because of the size of our agency versus who Oracle supports worldwide. So it's harder to get their attention. And for example, Rimini Street, one of the firms that offers the support, they're basically people that used to work at Oracle that thought, hey, we could do this better ourselves, and started their own businesses.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Is there a motion to approve?
More seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? So be it. Next item, item six, also from Tom. Our 2022 to 2025 equal employment opportunity affirmative action program submission. Tom?
Thank you. As a requirement for receiving FTA funding, Bi-State is required to submit an equal employment opportunity from an FTA action program every four years. And so this program contains a detailed set of procedures and employment information. It's designed to ensure that agencies meet equal employment opportunity requirements and guidelines that are published by the FTA. So the document must be in compliance with many laws enlisted in your briefing paper concerning civil rights, veteran status, disabilities, immigration, medical service, equal pay, and fair labor rules. The Board of Commissioners is responsible for reviewing the contents of the plan prior to its submission to FTA, and management is recommending that the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee accept and forward to the Board the 2022 to 2025 equal employment opportunity affirmative action program. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The EEO plan was prepared by McMahon Burger, our outside counsel on EEO issues.
Any questions or comments for Tom? We need a motion to approve, please.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Any upstairs, anyone abstaining? Motion is passed. Item eight, the external audit client service plan from Ruben Brown, Tammy Fulbright, please.
Good morning. Commissioner, I, I think the budget was very-
Oh, I'm sorry. Number seven. We're still going to stick with Tammy, but this is, how did I pass, missed the budget? 23 operating budget and the fiscal year 2023 to 2025 capital budget. Tammy?
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen because I have a presentation for this. Can everyone see that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I'm going to go onto the second slide here. I would show this as a slide, but for some reason, I can't get that to work. Okay, sorry about that. So I'll open this up to Toby if you want to start out with this, the screen, Toby, or I can go with it.
Sure, I can't, well, Tammy knows that this is my favorite slide, and she knows it's my favorite slide because what's really important here, Commissioners, if you will, is not necessarily what, how our 12-month budget performance is, and certainly that's what we're talking about now. But what's much more important in an industry, and for instance, in an organization like ours, is where are our financial trend lines? Okay? How do we trend over multiple years? That really tells us about the real health of, of the organization. And what I'm very excited about is, as you can see, this, for comparison purposes, the red line's showing a 3% growth factor, a, the blue line being a 2% growth factor, and starting at the, in the middle of that, the, the blue box, that's when, that's of course, when, when I, I started here, and, and the green line shows now the four fiscal years since. And of course, the flattening of this line is absolutely critical to our financial health. And what I am most excited about is the tail. The tail is showing that actually, we have a budget request in front of you today that involves an operating reduction. This is key to living within our financial resources, to being disciplined about cutting at where we can and getting efficient where we can. You saw several presentations today where we were cutting out 100, 200, $300,000. Staff is dedicated to this kind of financial discipline. It is hard work. We don't always do it perfectly, but we are pursuing this, and we're pursuing it so that this graph looks this way. So I'm very proud of this, but really, the folks who are making this happen are people like Tammy Fulbright, like even a, a Tom Curran, a Crystal Messner, a- like even a Tom Curran, a Crystal Messner, a Chuck Stewart. They're getting the job done. We're we're proud to present this FY23 budget to you. Go ahead, Tammy.
Okay. And this is really important because in our history, prior to this, our growth was at up 3%. So this is a huge accomplishment over the last four years. And one of our core values is fiscal responsibility, and this is how we're going to find that sustainability is by 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 doing things such as this, and it will help us maintain our stimulus funding as we move forward too. So I'm going to move on into transit. And on this screen, what you see is our comparison between our FY23 and our FY22 budget. For revenue, what you'll see is that in 23, we're at three hundred and thirty-five million dollars, which is slightly down from the prior year. We're being conservative on passenger revenue. As you can see, it's shown at eighteen point five million, which is about where we're tracking right now. The grant sales tax and contractual contractual line item is where our sales tax funding, some of the federal vehicle maintenance money comes in, as well as our stimulus funds, and our St. Clair County Transit District contract comes in on this line item. So it's slightly up because of needs for federal stimulus funds. The interest income, we're showing it slightly down by 1.1 million. As you know, yesterday, I believe it was yesterday, the Fed raised rates. So we are optimistic about that. So hopefully, maybe we can do a little better than what's shown there. For other revenue, this is primarily like advertising rental that we do. So it's pretty steady there with what we're showing. When you get to the expenses and you see wages and benefits, you can see we're only growing at point eight percent. This is primarily due to reductions we're working on in workers' comp. And if you look at the service line item, you'll see we're down there about two million, and that's primarily due to working on things such as non-capitalized projects and our outside consulting, because that's where those things fall in. Also, on the services line item, just to bring to your attention, that's where police contracts come in and our security contracts. So for fuel, you can see we're down by about 1.3 million. This is largely due to our fuel hedge program. What we're showing and projecting is about a 2.3 million dollar savings on that line item, which is helping to offset some of the expected increases in fuel for next year. Parts and supplies are pretty steady, and casualty insurance, we're showing about 1.2 million dollar decline. So overall, net income before depreciation, we're at about 300,000 dollar deficit, which can be covered by non-cash and other federal stimulus funds. The next slide is just a pie chart, really mapping those expenses out, showing that wages and benefits are sixty-six and a half percent, or 206 million dollars. Our next biggest item is services at 46 million. Going to the next slide, you'll see our funding partners and revenue sources. So it's important to note that this doesn't include all of our funding. This is really the funding we get in for the operating budgets. So for capital and for principal on debt, we get from the county and city. Those those items aren't noted here. So as you can see, St. Louis County represents 162 million or forty-eight and a half percent. St. Louis City, thirty-six and a half million, or almost 11%. And St. Clair County, 60 million or 18%. So those are our largest funding partners. And then passenger revenue is again showing at that 18 and a half million. Going into the capital budget, so we have a three-year capital budget of 617.7 million dollars. So you can see our local funding makes up about 23%, federal funding 77%. And on this next slide, it gives you a little bit more of a breakdown of the kind of funding we get from federal sources. Our two biggest ones being Formula 5307 funding and a state of good repair funding. For local sources of capital funds, you can see St. Louis County noted there and St. Clair County. The operating budget, those funds really are coming in from federal sources. Also, Illinois Local Match and other funds. And then finally, these are the breakouts of how those expenses are being used in a pie chart. The next slide really gives you the more detail per dollar of how we're using these capital funds. So our biggest line item being on buses, RVs, and even non-revenue vehicles at the 242 million, and then the MetroLink structure projects at 91 million. Moving on into the Gateway Arch, as you can see in comparison to 22, the revenue is a lot better. So they have more capacity. They're moving in the right direction. They had an increase in ticket prices of about $3 per ticket. So that's showing revenue at 7.9 million. As the revenue increases, expenses also increase. So they're showing a slight loss of 255,000. And we do believe that that is probably being very conservative because they're really showing some good signs over at the arch. So we're thinking we can get that number positive and hopeful of that. For the riverfront, they're doing twice as many cruises as they did last year. So revenue is at 3.5 million with expenses at almost 3.5 million. So they're almost break even, but with 100,000 in income, they'd like to use 50,000 of that for capital budget, and they're going to do a kitchen overhaul and the Pedo Cafe overhaul in the next year. Moving on into the airport, you can see that they also are about 1.9, so pretty steady, not not a lot of change from last year. Expenses down slightly at 1.7, so they're showing income of 163,000. And here are some of the projects over the next three years that they're looking at is the taxiway, the Curtis Steinberg Drive. They have some other equipment and facility and land improvements they want to do. As you remember, they have some grant funding also for the engine run-up. And then moving into Freightway, you can see their revenues at 500,000, expenses at 641, so they have a deficit of 142,000. We are looking at other revenue sources there, so that may improve also. And then finally, we're getting into executive services. So this 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 slide will basically let you know funding coming in for administrative services for transit is at about 4.2 million. For the arch, those numbers are improving as they get more ticket sales. So they're at 660,000, the airport's at almost 100,000, the National Park Service at 265, and then slight improvement for interest income or actually decline, but we're hopeful of an improvement there. And total expenses at 4.9, so we believe we'll be in about a quarter of a million. And then the self-insurance fund. So for the self-insurance fund in 23, we're expecting to pay out more claims, about 3.4 million more in claims. And this is primarily due to some delay related to COVID and the pandemic. All those claims did not come in as timely as we would have liked. For casualty, we're expecting about 1.9 million increase. And then for workers' comp, just slightly more at 322,000, actually down. For arts and transit, so this is nonprofit, so they they break even. So what they get in in revenue, they'll spend on wages, services, and materials for art projects on transit. So the final slide is really the recommendation to the board for approval of this 23 operating budget, the 23 through the 25 capital budget, the three-year transportation improvement plan, and the grant resolutions supplied for our federal and state funding necessary to support these programs. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
And any questions for Tammy or Toby?
It's not a question, but it's just sheer lack of understanding. I probably should have called in advance. Maybe I can contact you, Tammy, so that I can better understand why St. Clair County's share in terms of rev- their revenue sources so so high, and our ridership doesn't necessarily, you know, equate or doesn't necessarily correspond to the percentage that St. Clair County pays toward operations. I'll call about that if I can.
Okay.
If I can call you to try to understand, because it doesn't make sense to me if the if the if the ridership is is outside of St. Clair County primarily. I mean, you know, the numbers are just higher in terms of users, but the support is so much higher, particularly when I look at St. Clair County against the city of St. Louis.
Okay, I'd be happy to talk through that with you.
Okay, thank you.
Bobby, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, it any any commissioners or any policymakers who wants to get a more thorough one-on-one briefing, we're happy to do so. It is true that the that the modal split between the states is is always complex issue to to try to figure out. We try to do it as fairly as possible. One thing that the chairman recently asked us to do in particular was to try to look more specifically at the modal split associated with MetroLink. And so once we finish the budget process, which we're obviously in the middle of, I talked to Tammy about this, and we're going to ask Larry Rusparzki, very good detailed person on staff, to try to look at that modal split and give a presentation specifically to the chairman and to St. Clair County about that, to to show what that logic is. The 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 logic is based on several different pieces as far as the modal split. One is hours of service. And hours of service is slightly different and a different measuring point than obviously what the revenue side is. But all of them should be looked at in those contexts, and we're happy to look at that in detail. And of course, I'll share that presentation or the report for the chairman that he requested with the entire board so that you can get a fuller explanation.
Thank you.
And Toby, this all the budget and those other line items for approval go to the full board also in April, correct?
Yes, they do. This is we're simply at the committee level, so that gives us time then for these one-on-one presentations, Terry, if necessary. And of course, we will start the presentations with with staff, for instance, with St. Clair County staff to go over all of these details as well as we have to make the same presentation to to the Transit District Board, and for instance, Board of Aldermen and St. Louis County. So this is a long involved process, but we're trying to advance it and get it done a lot sooner than had been in the past.
Thank you. Any other comments? I know there's a lot to digest here. Any questions? If not, a motion to approve would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion passed.
Terry, I'll abstain.
And more abstains as well until we get through this discussion.
Okay. Now, Tammy, we're moving to item eight, the External Audit. Ruben Brown.
This is just a quick update on the external audit. So Ruben Brown will begin testing in May, and will be performing fieldwork in the latter part of August September. So they'll have drafts to the committee in October and to the board in November. What the scope of work is, their normal scope, with the audit of the annual comprehensive comprehensive financial report, the examination of the fuel hedge effectiveness, a single audit of federal audits, the national transit database agreed upon procedures, and then an independent audit report on the grand accountability and transparency consolidated year-end financial report for Illinois. And I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
Any questions, comments? That's information only, so we'll move forward to also with Tammy, the Treasuries Report for the month ending December 31st.
Thank you. I want to bring attention to this report in your packet. Our Director of Treasury, Terry Gutowitz-Green, updated this some, and hopefully, this is beneficial and presents the material in a little bit better way and adds some value. The report is really just that we, as you know, the Fed raised rates, so we're continuing to work to build our three-year ladder portfolio. So we're hopeful that rates as they start to become up, we can improve the interest income on that. So right now, our directed funds are 278 million, and the average rate of return is five basis points. We have about 47 million in trustee-directed funds, and that's earning a little under 1%, but it's important to remember that those funds can be invested out a lot further. In addition, I want to just talk quickly on the fuel hedge program. So this is just proof that it's actually working. So our average cost per gallon is 2.4, $2.46. We're budgeted at $1.74, but with the hedge, we're at $1.77. That is exactly how the fuel hedge is supposed to work for us in times such as these. We are out about three years on this, so we're hopeful that'll keep us pretty steady on the budget for the next couple of years, as we don't really know how rates will fluctuate on gas. So thank you, and that's my report this morning. If you have any questions.
Any questions?
I just wanted to say thanks so much on the fuel the hedge that obviously that's sometimes, you know, can be risky, but obviously, it's it's paying off, and I'm really appreciative that that ByState went in that direction.
It's very important. That's information only. The next item is item 10. We're going to move to Crystal Messner, the Treasury Safekeeping Accounts Audit, the period ending December 31st of last year.
So this is just kind of, we wanted to put this in order so that it flows with the Treasury Report each month. So we do a quarterly report off of the Treasurer's Report as a check and balance. For this period that ended on December 31st, 2021, we recognize that the cash balances are fairly stated as reported in the Treasurer's Report. One of the things that we've been trying to do is expand our scope of work. So what we have done is we have included the reported actual performance of that fuel hedge program. So we're doing the checks and balances. We went all the way back to the beginning of April 2004, so many, many years, almost 20 years, and looked at all the numbers. And within those results, we found that they were reasonably reflective of the performance of the program. And then we will actually, in future quarters, just be looking forward to actually including budget and current estimates of the fuel hedge program that will be in this verification report. Again, we went from verifying a little over around 40 million to almost 470 million dollars at this time, plus fuel hedging. But it's just for informational, and I'm open to any questions if anyone has any.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Crystal. Next item, Financial Statements. Tammy?
Thank you. So I'll just run through the different enterprises quickly. So Executive Services at December had income of 150,000, and this is primarily due to a reduction in expense for consultant and outside services. This could be timing, but this is what we're seeing right now. The Gateway Arch has a loss of 900,000. And this is primarily due to the bond refunding, which had about a $500,000 expense that had to be incurred this year. But this is still an improvement as we had been budgeting over about a $3 million loss for the year. So we're we're doing better than expected. Revenues have been improved as capacity has increased, and especially with the addition of the increase on the ticket prices. Riverboats have income of about 400,000 before depreciation. This the cruises have doubled since this time last year. The airport has income of 125,000, and transit is showing 82 million dollars in income. And this is really just timing as we brought in our CARES money early this year. And so this is a timing issue, and and we should see that by the end of the fiscal year. And then Freightway is down about 90,000, and that's my report this morning, if there's any questions.
Just one question on your bond refunding. Was that a a tax-free or was that a taxable refunding, not knowing how many times you've done it, so?
And so this one was for the arch, and it is they were taxable bonds. And so about $7 million in bonds for the arch. It saves them by doing the refunding, it saved them about 30 to 32,000 dollars a year in in debt service fund.
With rates down, it's kind of a wash that it's taxable to take advantage of the lower rates. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other?
Yeah, Tammy, a question. You know, when you talk about the CARES Act money that's included into the budget, we all know that that's not going to be here in the future. What kind of impact is that going to have down the road? Is there any way to Is there any way to get to pulse on that?
So right now, and these are, you know, far out projections into '27 and '28. So we feel like the money should get us through until that point, based on what we know today. But I think that's where the fiscal responsibility really comes in, and we have to change as an organization and really start looking, which we always have. But we're, I think, doing a better job. And honestly, I plan to go out and try to engage other people in this actively as, you know, finding better ways for us to do business and trying to find opportunities where we can. So I think we have a look on it right now, but we're continuing to look at it. So there's more work to be done.
Well, thank you, and I also want to publicly just thank you, the conversations that we've had over the last week or so. Your response has always been right on target, and I really appreciate the job you're doing. And I know the other commissioners feel the same way.
Any other comments? Thank you, Herb. Next item is the procurement report. Tom Curran?
Yes, Logan, this is for your information. So far in the third quarter of fiscal year 2022, our non-competitive procurement totaled $2.39 million or 7.4% of the total purchase order commitment volume of $32.4 million so far this quarter. Total expenditures for the third quarter are about double the volume of last quarter, but still about average in terms of spending. And relative to the total spend, the percentage of non-competitive procurements declined from 10.2% of overall spending in the second quarter to the current 7.4% in the third quarter. Taking a longer view over the last 12 months, non-competitive procurements totaled $8.2 million or 8% of our total purchase order volume of 102.3 million. The 12-month rolling average of non-competitive spending was 14.4% in the second quarter, compared to only 8% in the third quarter. But I do want to point out that although we've been experiencing a decrease in the percentage of non-competitive procurements recently, some sole source needs related to technology and system upgrades, such as our SCADA system, will change this pattern in the near future. So be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Tom, one question on the procurement. I've noticed, and Toby and I have had this discussion in the past, maybe you can shine some light on it. It seems that when we are trying to procure different items, is it being broke down or is it just that complicated with the procurement department? I know we've talked about there's some work that needs to be done there. Are we making any headways on that? It just seems like there's a lot of these projects that are being delayed. And when I ask a question, I always get told it's a procurement problem.
So we have two things going on. Number one is supply chain issues in general. The whole world is suffering from that in a general sense. And secondly, we have, as I talked about previously, struggled with having adequate staffing. We did finally get up to the total number of buyer planners that we need. But unfortunately, two are currently out because of medical. And so it's true that we have done a better job of staffing, but we're still suffering from supply chain issues in general. And the lead times that used to be for various items are much longer, and it's something that's mostly out of our control. The thing that we're trying to do to address it is to make sure that we're recognizing those increased lead times and ordering products sooner.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Tom? That's information. Thank you. The next item is item 13, the Pension Plans 401K Retirement Savings Program and Other Post-Employment Benefits Investment Performance Update. Chuck Stewart, please.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'd like to, for information only, I'd like to give you an update on our 401K savings program, pension plans, and OPEB trust investment performance. This is an update through December 31, 2021. Our investment advisors are CAP Trust, formerly Elwood Advisors, and they made these presentations at the February trustee committee meetings. Starting with our 401K program, the program, the assets at the end of the year were 87.5 million. This is up 10.3 million from last year, where they stood at 77.2. The allocation of individual funds and asset types remain relatively unchanged. There are about 21 options available to our team members in terms of investing these funds. The most popular continues to be the T-Roll Price Lifecycle Funds, which you basically, you pick a retirement date, you put your money in there, and the options within that fund change as you progress through your career. Salaryed pension plan assets were 102.3 million, up 7.7 million since the beginning of the calendar year. Performance for the full year was about a plus 11%. Now, you'll notice that these performances this year are a little lower than last year, so things weren't quite as robust. And you know that investment earnings are very significant in terms of the health of our pension plans. So this is something that we need to make, make sure we pay attention to going forward. In the IBW plan, the assets increased 0.06 million since the beginning of the year. This is a very mature plan, small number of employees. It's a closed plan, so we're kind of just working on maintaining. So the investment gains for the year were about 10.4%. For the ATU plan, assets were 191 million at the end of the year, an increase of 16.9 million. For this fund, this is extremely important. This, again, is our fund that has pressures in terms of cash flow. Our outflows are almost equal to our inflows in terms of contributions. So basically, the investment earnings make the difference in terms of keeping this plan healthy. And last but not least is our OPEB trust fund. As of the end of the year, the value of the fund was 57.5 million, and we had 14.1 million in earnings for the year. I'd like to give you, I think we talked about this at our last meeting, but I'd also like to give you the funding ratios. As of June 1, the funding ratio in salary plan was 83.3%. And the IBW plan as of March was 85.5, and ATU was 70.6. So we continue to focus on the health of these plans, and I think that we are maintaining sufficient investment earnings in order to do that. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chuck. It takes a lot of time, effort, and oversight. Unscheduled business. Toby, do you have anything?
I do not.
Well, why don't you move right into item 15, your report, please?
I took up enough time in the first committee meeting, so I will defer unless there's any specific questions for me.
You want to have any questions for Toby under this committee structure? If not, Myra, new upcoming board and committee meeting dates, once again, please.
The next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Friday, April 22. The next Safety and Security meeting will be held on Thursday, May 5. And the next Operations Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee meeting will be held on Friday, June 10, all beginning at 8:30 a.m.
Thank you. Executive session, while we have one scheduled as usual, the only item for consideration on the agenda in executive session is the approval of the minutes, executive session minutes from January 28th, AFA committee meeting. If there are no corrections or additions or comments to these minutes, we can move directly to a vote right now, if that would be acceptable to everybody. So if there are no comments, I would entertain a motion to approve those executive committee minutes at this time.
So moved.
Do we need a roll call?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Windmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney? Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastello?
Aye.
The motion passed.
Thank you. If there's no other further business, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. See you all next month.
All right, have a good weekend.
Bye, everybody.